Thanks.
So we do have, we do have five people because Dave just dropped in.
I saw that. Let me just. So has everybody had a, well, let's see, what, what time is our hearing start?
Actually, 5:30.
Okay. So can we get the clerk to read the notice?
I think we can do that. Who is that anyways?
It's you, Dave. You're the.
Oh, another one of those votes that I missed a vote on, huh?
That's right.
In accordance with the Mass General Law's Chapter 48 and the Townsend bylaws, the Townsend zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 10th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And that's an hour by Memorial Hall. It's, it's actually, as you can know, it's all remote. On the application of Joseph, and Joe, I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, Iodice, Diane Silva, and Debbie Idose, special permit under zoning bylaws, Sections 145, 46, 145, 65, and 145, 40. The applicant is requesting a special permit for earth excavation for property located partly in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District at 59 West Meadow Road, Sessions Map 5, Block 4, Lot 0 and 1, Zone partially RA3 and RB2 zone. And in accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws, GLC 38 and Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. You may attend by, and I am not reading the address for that Zoom. Materials are available digitally on request on email by Bfaxton@townsindma.gov. And surprise, I are encouraged to attend. Party wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so with writing prior to the hearing or at a hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. Causes of the application are available digitally upon request to Bfaxton@townsind.gov and for review in the office of the town clerk and local use office during hours. William Cattigan, your emtable chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. There you go.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Well, pull, I have to poll the members. So Vicki?
Yes.
David?
Aye.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So we're, we're open for business.
Dave Funioli, is he a full member or is an associate?
He's an associate. So we have, we have five full members, right? Because I think Vicki's a full member now, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And Sean is as well, right?
Yep.
Okay. So we're good.
Am I miscounting? We have six people.
That's right.
So who's going to be the full member? Dave, Dave made a motion to open the hearing. Was it him that made the motion?
I thought it was Sean.
Okay. Okay.
Good guess.
Thank you.
I'm just looking for, what did I do with all this stuff? Seems to me I just downloaded the agenda. I'm sorry. Temporary insanity.
Guilty.
What are we looking for, Bill?
Well, I was just looking for the agenda. So and also we got all that stuff from, from Beth, and I thought I had a link open that was at that point, but I can't find it anymore. So.
Yeah, I have like 10 tabs open, but they're not labeled. Like, I don't know what they are until I open them. And then you have to kind of download each time.
Here it is.
Vicki was so nice to pass on a nice link there. Isn't that nice?
All right. So.
This is not her first rodeo.
The agenda. Okay. Oh, all right. So we have some draft minutes, but we're going to do that later in the the regular agenda. Now, there should be a bunch of, what do you call it?
Mandatory referrals? Those were sent to the clerk, Dave.
What? Threw me under the bus. I don't recall getting those.
They're in the, they're in the thing here, public hearings and appointment. They're somewhere in here.
I sent them yesterday, Dave.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm going to claim ignorance until I can find them.
Okay. So they were in the email. Yeah.
I got it. I got them. All right. So the let's see, we have we have a comment from the building inspector. And in response to Beth, he's got, he says, no comment, but he's in favor of the permit of the plan as a whole, says the building inspector. Now, I think there's some letters from him elsewhere in my stuff here.
Yes.
The planning board, oh, to the planning board from the Conservation Commission. And there's an order of conditions that was issued on January 20th of this year from the Conservation Commission. So I don't know if we have a copy of that, but basically, I don't, maybe Stan would be the best person to describe this property, but it's it's a Robert's Farm, which most of us know what that implies. But anyway.
Yeah.
The so it's got wetlands on it and the fish and wildlife people are going to take possession of most of the land, apparently.
That's correct.
And the only other interesting thing is that there's a natural heritage listing for turtles, which would basically, I believe I've read somewhere that that limits, limits their earth removal to ending at like April 15th or something like that to, to avoid damaging the turtle habitats or some darn thing. So.
That's correct. That's correct. So originally, this site, as, as Dave said, has been used, used and abused for quite some time. And three or four years ago, the previous building inspector, he issued a cease and desist order because there were some areas that he felt were unsafe where there were very steep slopes. Though our original proposal was to kind of regrade the site and loam and seed it and bring it back to a more natural state. And in that time, Fish and Wildlife has agreed to purchase the property. And working with them and the endangered species people, other than the excessively steep slopes, they pretty much want us to leave it the way it is because it actually makes good habitat for the turtles. So the proposal has kind of come around a little bit. And now what we're doing is we're not removing anything from the site. It's truly an earth excavation permit. We're going to be basically pushing some dirt around and flattening out some excessively steep slopes and cleaning up all the trash and the building construction debris and everything else that is out there. We've already been to Conservation Commission. We've been to planning board for a stormwater permit. We're pretty close to having our permit from the endangered species people to go ahead with the work. And you are correct that where the work needs to be completed by April 15th and/or put off until the next non-active season for the turtles, or there has to be turtle protection in place for the turtles. So the, the goal is to get this cleaned up before April 15th. So Fish and Game can buy it.
Stan, I just, this is Dave Chanel. Just a couple of questions. So this is not a excavation Santa Grail permit operation you're looking at, do you? You're just looking to move stuff around. Does that even require a permit if, if they don't take it off the property?
Well, we've, we've, we've had this discussion a couple of times.
I, I think we have, yeah.
Well, the earth excavation permit says if you move more than 20 yards of material, that you, that we need a permit and we're obviously going to do that.
I've always thought the movement qualified as moving it from boundary line to boundary line, not necessarily between, between one. If I have, if I have five acres of my land, I want to take, you know, 50 yards of, from one corner to the other, do I need a permit to do that?
Well, it, it's nebulous. The way it reads, it's ambiguous. So rather than not file for, not file for the permit, I think we've done this in another case where you guys actually made the determination that we didn't need the permit. Or you could issue the permit and we've covered all the bases. I agree. It's, it's worded poorly and it probably should be another, taken another look at, maybe the, the language changed, but it is what it is right now.
Okay.
Written the way it is. And you could interpret it either way. And us being, having to be conservative on our client's behalf, we, we interpret it that we need the permit.
Okay. So, so the solution we have is either to go through the permitting process and let you sell what you want to do to us and then issue a permit, or we could just say right from the beginning that, you know, based on your presentation, which I'm going to ask you to do again with a little more direction, that we don't believe there's a necessary necessity for a permit. Either way, that would serve your purpose?
I believe so, yeah. Yep.
Cool.
I guess I'll, Beth, Beth is the taskmaster. I'll, I'll ask her if that would be acceptable. I, I, I don't, I mean, you make the determination, you'd issue a permit, and we don't need one, I think either way would be acceptable.
Same thing. Yeah.
I'd bring that up to the board. That's the chairman's decision.
Dave, Dave, I was struggling with the same thing and I'm trying to, no, this is where my memory's not so great, 20 years back. But we've always treated this as an earth removal special permit. It's actually an earth excavation special permit. Did somebody change verbiage somewhere down the line, making this more ambiguous or?
I think it's been that way all along. I think we went through this. I think we went through this on the fire station. Because we filed for a permit when we did the fire station and it was the same scenario. We were moving, you know, we were moving stuff around on site, but we weren't removing anything from the site. And I think, I think if memory serves, that was, that was the site where you made the determination that we didn't need the permit.
I was going to say, Stan, that's when we, that's when we took a vote after a long, arduous process. We said, we don't really need to do this.
Then I was wondering, was it the aquifer protection overlay that maybe brought it into meeting a special permit?
Well, the building commissioner's letter is what you, basically, if you read the building commissioner's letter, that will help you, I think, understand the reason for you being here tonight.
I read it, but I don't necessarily agree with it though.
Well, there's, there's three copies there. Are they all the same or?
Different, different parties. Yeah.
They went to different owners. Yes.
Oh, they went to different owners.
Yeah, the three owners of the property.
I see. All right. I couldn't figure that out. I figured, oh, well.
But I can give you a little, a rundown and a little more detail if you'd like.
That's what I would like to, if we could do that, guys, if you would agree, have them do a little presentation.
Sure.
Yeah. I've, I've printed up the two maps that were in your package there. One, the long skinny one that shows what the, the frontage on West Meadow and then all the way down into the swamp there.
Correct. And there's an, there's an existing haul road that goes through there. And it is, it was worse than it is now, but it's littered with used construction debris all the way along. And the goal is to get rid of all that. There's piles of, there's tires, there's concrete pipe, there's concrete block, there's plywood, sheets of plywood, there's all kinds of stuff there that Fish and Game wants all that cleaned up before they take possession of it. The main area where we'll be doing our work is in the back where that crosshatched area is, far north end of the property. There's a couple of loam piles there and there's some really steep slopes that were left there and sandbags with, one of them has a large dead tree on the top of it. And there's some other construction debris up there. That's, that's really the focus of what we're trying to regrade that area and clean that up so that those slopes aren't so steep and unstable. And then there's a couple of other places. Maybe about halfway back where there's an existing pit where there's some steep slopes that would get flattened out. And that's basically it. Our original proposal to loam and seed it was kind of negated by Fish and Game because they brought up the point that we don't know where the loam would come from and you could introduce invasive species in there and where it's prime habitat for some endangered species. They, they really would like us to just pretty much leave it as it is, but addressing the the previous building inspector's concerns about the safety.
So what, what, what are these slopes? You said they were, they were sandbagged up?
No, they're sand, they're sand, they're sand. It's a big sandbag. And then that area in the back, there's, there's a place where the slopes are basically one to one. So I propose to restore them to what's required in the bylaw to two to one.
Okay.
Bill, can I interject for a moment? Vicki and Nikki has offered to share that site plan on the screen. If Hartley will allow her to be co-host so that everyone could speak. Is that okay with you?
Sure. Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Hartley, are you there?
He's muted.
Hartley, are you with us? Agent Hartley? Hartley?
He's, he's back on video at least.
Okay. Hartley, are you there?
Oh, okay.
Hello, Hartley? Okay, Vicki, there we go. Beautiful. We're good.
I want to be able to blow it up though. It's, that's the same thing I have.
Right.
Thank you, Vicki and Hartley.
Yeah, it'd be better than, at least than 11 by.
Vicki, can you turn it, can you turn it 90 degrees clockwise, please? Oh, we found a limit of our expertise.
No, we haven't. There's a reason I asked Vicki. She knows what she's doing.
We can talk left and right instead of north itself, I guess. So, um, well, there we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
There we go.
That's good. Yeah. Okay. Very good. Good job, Bill.
So the majority of the slopes that are unstable are in that area, that hatched area that's called Area A.
Yeah.
And that will be, that actually got excavated down to pretty much to groundwater. So it is now, it not, it is now emerged, emerging as a wetland and Fish and Game would like that to stay that way. So we're, we've got, our order of conditions allows us to go in, clean up the slopes, fix any, anything that becomes disturbed and get out of there and then just leave it alone and let it be, let it go back to nature. So that's, and that heavy dashed line that you see, that's, that's the limit of work that Fish and, Fish and Wildlife, endangered species people would like us to adhere to. So we have that one area in the back. And then if you can, can scroll up a little bit, a little more, there's that area where you see that there's a, like a junction in the, I'm pointing like you can see me. There's a junction in the road there, about in the middle of the screen. There's another pit, there's another pit in that area that has a couple of slopes that are pretty steep that we're going to flatten out. And that's, that's essentially it. We'll use that existing haul road. There was an A and R lot created in the front. If that lot were to sell, then they would, eventually they're going to have to relocate the road anyhow so there'll be access to the property because all of the, I believe, all Fish and Game properties are open to the public. Donna, if we have to relocate, if the lot were to sell before the work were complete, they'd relocate the road. They'll relocate the road anyhow, but they would have to relocate it during the work. And if they relocate it during work, we proposed a construction entrance there so they don't track any, any sediment out onto West Meadow Road.
Stan, just a qualifier, Vicki, could you scroll back to this, to the checkered area, please? So the area in some years past, they've actually taken it down below groundwater?
Well, it's, I haven't done any test bits there, but if you went out there now, there'd be standing water on the ground. So it's, 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 if, it's pretty close to groundwater, I would say, based on what has reemerged as a vegetation that's there. It's mostly facultative wet stuff that's, that's reemerged there. So it must be fairly close to the groundwater.
Okay. And they want you to leave, they want to leave that as is to, to have an emerging wetland area or something like that?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah. Well, there's wetlands all around. I mean, you've got, you've got two little blobs labeled historic wetland. Are those actually still wetlands?
Yeah, they are. Well, they are, except for the one on the left has been driven through several times, but they are. And then again, those, those were taken from a subdivision plan that the, the family had prepared 15 to 20 years ago. And it's my opinion that those, those are wetlands because those were excavated down close to groundwater. So, so I think would, that's, this will make a nice wetland area in the back that everybody, everybody's in favor of having that become a wetland and provide habitat.
Okay. So go, just going back to my initial premise, there's no dirt, gravel, sand, whatever, that's leaving the premises.
Correct.
Okay.
Just track.
Still stand, I stand by my position when we did the garage back, back about seven years ago or whatever, how many years ago it was.
There's a significant amount of trash that, that will be leaving the site.
That's, yeah, that's foreign material. That's not natural materials.
So was that, was that the, the firehouse in the harbor with all the wetlands around it?
No, I'm talking about, no, in the town garage, I mean, when we did the.
Oh, the town garage. Okay.
Remember there was a, there was a boatload of dirt and stuff. They had to move, move, they'd move tons of dirt, hundreds and hundreds of yards. And some of it ended up with the libraries, which, which I got, which, which I got reported to when I was a select one. I authorized that move. That's another story.
Right. Oh, I remember that. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I stayed in town a boatload of money and got, got my finger slapped. But, you know, I, as long as it doesn't leave the premise, I don't think there's a permit required. And I, that's, I don't know.
I agree with you. I mean, because mostly what we're concerned about is the trucking and stuff like that. So doesn't sound like there's any trucking leaving.
I know. I, I had a whole bunch of like conditions I was going to like read off in my, in my motion to, to approve. You know, conditioning on time of the day, the amount that could do, you know, and all this other stuff, but none of it's necessary. I don't know what we would permit.
Because our original permit was submitted when there, there was a plan to possibly remove some material from the site, but that's not going to happen anymore.
Well, that's, and that was a change. I didn't realize that until just when you spoke initially. So I, what about other people? I mean, you agree with it. Darling, what do you think?
I, I agree. We've always treated this as, as earth being removed from the site, leaving the site. And even if you read the bylaw, it says from the land. So, but I don't know. I think it's ambiguous.
Yeah, but I mean, if we're consistent, right?
Right. Exactly. Yep.
Dave Funioli, how about you? You've been, you've been around for a while. Dave Funioli decided to leave us?
No, I'm here. I couldn't find the unmute button. No, I, I agree with your assessment of that. If nothing's leaving the, the boundaries of the lot, then I don't see why there should be a permit. Like Darlene says, nothing's leaving the property. So it's not an excavation as much as it's, it's like remodeling almost.
Yeah.
So Stan, are you, are you, are you going to truck out this concrete debris and stuff? Are you going to bury it somewhere? Or what are you going to do?
No, it's, it's going to be removed from the site.
Okay.
So there will be, there will be vehicular activity associated with the removal because there's a fair amount of material that's got to come off of the site. There's, there's, I, you would be blown away by the size of the couple of piles of concrete blocks that are up there. There's got to be 10,000 concrete blocks out there. So they, we did talk with the Conservation Commission about crushing that stuff on site and leaving it there, but the consensus was that everybody wanted it to go away.
I was gonna say, that probably didn't go over well. I mean, but even if you have, even if you have hundreds of yards of trash that you have to take out of it, that doesn't require a permit from us. That's, that's not.
It's not an earth, it's not an earth removal.
No, it's, it's, it becomes a cleanup, but not an earth excavation. And it sounds like you're not actually going to even move that much dirt around just in a few spots, reducing the one to one slopes down to two to one.
Right.
So, yeah. Yeah, I think we could pass on this if everybody's agreeable.
How about you want, you want to ask Vicki and Sean as well? They've probably done some homework on this.
Sure.
I agree with the consensus that if the soil's not leaving, then there's no permit necessary. Where is this actually located? I was kind of confused. Is it West Townsend? Like?
It's West Townsend. It's on West Meadow Road where it curves to head towards the condos. I, I live not too far away. So.
Was it dumping ground?
It was a farm at one point, a long time ago, and then it sort of deteriorated from there.
Some specially historic famous farmers from Townsend.
I just remember the pigs used to escape all the time.
This isn't the one that had all the bathtubs out in the yard, is it? They have two farms.
I think that's a TV commercial that you're thinking of.
Yes, it's possible.
I could just add that the planning board did issue a stormwater management permit on Monday night for this project. So they're all set there.
If we, if we decided that we don't need to take any action, it would be by a, a motion to that we don't believe a permit is required. There's no, no material, no natural materials leaving, leaving the property, but that doesn't minimize any other boards from taking their respective actions, whatever they are, you know?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So I mean, I'm, I'm, is anybody done? I mean, I'll make a motion if that's, if you want to go that way, if you want to talk about it some more.
I would make a motion.
Excuse me. I, I had one question, um, in gag then from Fish and Wildlife. I was wondering, there's a, a small little section in the front that the landowners are selling to a, a butter, I believe. And would it be possible to move some of the existing material that has to be regraded from the slopes over onto that parcel, which is still all one parcel right now? That, that wouldn't be considered moving it off-site, correct?
Not in my position.
I wanted to make sure that we were clear on that so that they didn't end up getting in trouble by accident afterwards. Right now it's all one parcel.
Right.
So I, I, I would agree. It would seem to me that that would be the case, but I just wanted to point. So I, I, I would agree, it would seem to me that that would be the case, but I just wanted to point.
Yeah, as long as we stay consistent with our position, and Bill and Darlene and I, we go back on the, on the zoning board. I mean, I don't even remember how many, it's probably 25 years now, some stupid number. Around within the boundary of the property before it's transferred out, I don't, I still don't see it as a problem.
Yeah.
Right, okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
So there, there was something mentioned about an A and R lot, is that the, is that what you're, you're referring to, Anne?
Yes.
Yeah, it's down in the bottom right.
The A and R has, lot one, asking A and R.
Lot one, oh, I see, okay.
Lot one has been endorsed as an A and R lot by the Planning Board, but it's still owned by the, by the Idides family. It's still part of the property, it hasn't been sold.
Yep.
Yeah, so they just wouldn't wanna convey it until they've.
Until they get done moving around the material, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, but argue it's being done as part of construction too.
Right, then if that was, were a single-family residential lot, it would be exempt anyhow.
Right.
Good call, darling. She's a smart girl.
Thank you.
That's why we pay her the big bucks. All right, so is there a motion?
Who wants to give it?
Vicky sounded kinda like you had one half-worded there.
That's a problem, I can never remember what I said. Let me find the agenda, I don't even know who the heck these people are anymore.
Do we have to continue to read the mandatory referrals or no?
No.
No.
All right, good.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the application for sand and gravel removal by Diane Silva, Debbie Adose, and Joseph is not necessary as, as testimony indicates that there is no natural product being removed from the property.
Second.
Okay, anything else to be said? All right, polling the members, Vicky?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank, thank you for attending.
Look with it.
Thanks. Looking forward to having it cleaned up.
Yeah, Stan, are you all set?
I am, thank you very much.
Good seeing you again, till next time.
Thanks. Next time, we don't need a permit, we'll come and see you. Thank you, good night.
Very cool.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good night.
All right, so I can't even get to my, okay, there.
Vicky, can you take that thing off the screen now? There you go.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm very, very impressed, Vicky, that's, that's pretty good.
Did I know who to ask?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is my life, Zoom.
That's awesome.
All right. So we, we had some meeting, or minutes we were supposed to look at.
I move to approve the zoning board meeting minutes for December 2nd, nineteen, twenty twenty, sorry.
Yeah, as amended, right?
As amended, oh, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, polling the members, Vicky?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yep.
Darlene Sedano?
Yes.
Dave Funnyoli?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries. All right, then, we also, we're gonna spend some time on, we have somebody applying for our associate position here, Mr. Jason Murray.
Hey, Jason.
Hey, how's it going, everybody?
Hello, Jason.
Hi, Jason.
Yep.
It's an easy night.
Apparently so.
Thank you for dressing up.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome, no problem.
That, that alone gets you into, into the.
Yeah.
Ask, why, why you wanna do this?
Um, so I just recently moved to Townsend about a year ago. I bought a property here and I wanted to help my community in the best way that I could. And I'm in college as well, and I'm in a couple of boards in my school. So I figured the best way I could help out was by joining a board. And with the boards that were available and the seats that were available, the zoning board, I thought would be my best choice. I do have a background in construction as well as excavation, and I am pretty familiar with the laws. Not so much like Townsend's particular laws, but you know, the general laws.
Cool, what, what's your background that gives you a, a hand up to, to help us with zoning enforcement stuff?
So I'm studying to be a lawyer, I'm gonna be going to law school.
You started to do what?
I'm studying to be a lawyer, I'm gonna be going to, to law school. Also works in excavation, and I grew up in a family that runs construction businesses.
Okay, are you in law school presently, or are you, you looking to get in?
I'm finishing up my bachelor's in economics, and then I'll be going to law school.
Which school are you at now?
Middlesex.
Good, so you're looking for the fall of 2021?
Yes, sir.
Oh, now you just called me sir, now that's, that's, that's a problem. We gotta, we gotta break him in, a kid.
Don't do that, man, don't ever call him sir.
I've known Darlene for thirty years, she's never done it once.
You can call him sir, you just have to spell it C U R.
Okay, that works.
All right, so as an excavator, you, you know about holes on the wrong property and stuff like that, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's one of the few buildings we had to take down was, was constructed by an excavator who claimed he didn't know where the property went.
And, and his spouse was the land use coordinator for, um, land use person for Pepperell.
The one on Edwards Road?
Yep.
Edwards, yeah, but he never took it down.
He just had to move it.
I don't think he ever moved it.
Well.
Garage on the corner, yeah.
Yeah. Jason, you know the, do you know the makeup of the zoning board? Do you know how we work?
Um, not exactly, no.
Well, you were watching us tonight, that's one lesson.
Yeah, so there's basically, so the board's made up, there's a potential of a maximum of eight people. Five that are full-time voting members, which is, our quorum's four, I guess, right? But then there's three associates. What's that, Bill?
I said the quorum depends on what we're doing. If we're just three minutes, it's a, a majority. But, but for special permits, and in fact, there was a, we just recently got an update from the state where they've changed the quorum or the, like, I think, I can't remember, was it a special permit? It's just a simple majority in some cases? I don't know.
I think I remember reading that same thing, Bill.
Yeah. They actually changed.
Brought that up. Can, can someone clarify, I was actually looking for Dave to clarify that. Is that an actual zoning board hearings that that applies? Or is that town meeting to approve zoning law changes?
I'm gonna find it.
I think it was both, Darlene. There are, they, they reduced town meeting vote to a simple majority for, I forget, some, something to do with housing. That's their hot button this week.
Yeah.
So, and then.
Fun, these have already passed, or are they still talking about it?
No, no, it's all done.
It is, okay.
We're gonna have to deal with it, yeah, yeah.
I was just, I was just reading, trying to catch up on it quickly.
We need some.
I think it went to the simple majority, but I think you're right, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Now you're just showing off.
Yeah, signed into law January fourteenth.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they defined some terms, which I guess had never been defined before. Oh, I know what they wanted to do, they wanna make open space preservation, what we call OSPD, which they call open space something else. They wanna make that a, as of right.
Right there on the screen, Bill.
As of right, yeah, as opposed to a special permit. And I'm, I'm just, I can't imagine what people are thinking about making an open space where there's a lot of negotiation in terms of, you know, does the town want the open space, does, you know, the stuff we used to go through on the planning board? And to make that as of right, I can't imagine how that's gonna work out because people are gonna say, well, I got this nice swamp here, and it's surrounded by cliffs, and you know, that's gonna be your open space. I don't know, I don't see how that's gonna work. But anyway, yeah, certain special permits go from two-thirds to a simple majority. But most of that, I don't, I don't know how much of this is actually gonna apply to us.
It's a lot more is for town meeting, with that sentence, I asked her to get it to John, it's really gonna apply to him.
Well, I'm kind of interested, is, you see that one where they allow judges to require up to a 50,000 bond from a plaintiff appealing a zoning decision?
No, I didn't, I didn't even get down on that far.
Well, it's, it's amazing, well, in Boston, in the city, which, you know, none of our zoning laws apply to Boston. And, but you can, you can file a zoning appeal in Boston, and the applicant can still build, build the project. You know, you can't hold them up at all, basically. If you win the zoning appeal, then lord knows what they're gonna do. Knock his building down or something, I, I don't know. But, but this is kind of a similar thing where they want, they don't want frivolous appeals of zoning decisions. So they're gonna, they say the judge can require up to 50 grand in a bond.
Yeah, I'm reading it, yeah.
That seems a little bit over the top to me.
Vicky, can you, can you send this over to Jason when he, when you, after the meeting, or tomorrow sometime?
Sure.
Or Beth, I'm sorry.
Maybe Beth, yeah, I don't know.
I can send it right now if you want.
Yeah, okay.
She's got the original.
So Jason, what we was talking about, so there's five people that vote, there's three that are associate members that, like David is an associate, although he's been a permanent member, he's been a selectman as well, in town as well. But, um.
Hi, Jason.
What happens is that if, if one of the main, one of the five that are, that are appointed as full-time, if we don't show up, you know, if I'm, if I'm working late or whatever, Dave or an associate or yourself could, could fill in, you just have to be appointed by the chair, which is Bill. And that, that's basically how it works.
Yeah, that's kinda how, like I said, I'm at the, I'm a member of the student government and, and school, and it's basically operated the same way.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, you know, Robert's rules, it's open, you know, the open meeting laws, all that kinda stuff, so, all right. If you're looking for the, if you're looking for punishment to get into this, I don't, I don't.
Be careful what you wish for.
You know, this could be a, a, a good way to learn 40A and a good way to learn our zoning bylaw, which, you know, every town has, has a zoning bylaw.
Yeah, so like Bill said, so 40A, which is the master general laws, 40A, that, that determines land use restrictions and all that stuff. The town bylaws kind of, they're codified under that in the bylaw section. The state sets the minimum threshold of what we can do. Towns can always increase the restriction, you can't, you can't go below what the state says is the minimum. Just let's know some, pretty much basic land use stuff. You run it in Property Y 101.
Town of Townsend website has, you can find all the bylaws on there, the general.
Yeah, I've been, I've actually been reading through it.
Okay, cool.
You ready for a quiz?
No.
What's the background setback?
That depends on where you are.
Well, Jason, if you haven't noticed before, we tend to be a little bit of a loosey-goosey board. We do what we need to do, but we're not stuffy and serious about it.
No, that's true.
Well, we haven't had a lot of complaints, and we haven't been sued lately, which is, that's.
That's always a plus.
Oh, yeah, it's funny, the very first time, I was, I've been on board, like I said, since ninety-six, something like that. I, the first time, I, I won't mention the, it was, he's actually a good friend of mine now, but he, he decided to sue the board, and I didn't know anything about it, and my mom and dad were babysitting my kids on a Saturday, and I came back after doing our little errands. My mom was, she had this ghost look on her face, and she got served in hand by a, by a constable for the complaint because we were parties in interest, beside herself. I was like, don't worry, mom, this is what I do for work, it's not a big deal.
Same thing happened to me, Dave, I had the, the infamous Copper Smith Wade decision, once that was finalized. First meeting I ever attended was having to sign my name to a Superior Court judge's order to allow what we had disallowed previous.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that's, that's not, that wasn't a good thing, but.
I got to testify in Land Court way back when with the Lord and Tank Farm, remember that?
God, that was, that was.
Which one?
Who was, who was, who did they hire? They hired some guy who was billing in the eighties at, at 350 an hour, you know? And we went to Land Court in Boston, right across from City Hall. And we, we walked in with our, our exhibits, we were all carrying them. And then, you know, the Lord and attorney pulls up in, in his van, and he's got all these porters that carry in his exhibits.
Yeah, those were called associates, Bill.
So many boxes, they use dollies to carry them in the bill.
Yeah, it was pretty amazing. It was really nice to win that case, I'll tell you.
So, I mean, I'm, I will make, I'll make a motion that we, that we name Jason Murray as a, as a prospective associate member for vote of the selectmen's board, if you want.
So the, so that motion is a vote to recommend to the.
We just have to, yeah, it's a recommendation for the selectmen, for the board.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you so much.
Once the, once the board of selectmen meet, and when they vote on this, on the agenda, you'll, either Beth will let you know, you'll get a letter, and then you'll have to get sworn in by the town clerk when you get a chance.
And do your training.
Hang on, we have to poll the members on that vote. You know, Beth is gonna beat me with a wet noodle. Vicky?
Yes.
Sean?
You're muted, Sean.
Yes.
That was a pregnant pause.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Funnyoli?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay, so it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't vote, if I don't mute, you guys hear kids screaming.
And then the, the training that Beth was talking about, there is a, an ethics thing you have to take with the state that basically says you're not gonna rob everybody blind and accept gratuitous gifts of over $5 for, for your sway and vote. Basically, that kinda what it is.
Yeah.
Non-life costs, Jake's about to happen.
Get some issues.
I keep meaning to do that, I've got, I've got the thing open to the link and everything, but I haven't done it.
How many reminders am I gonna send you, Bill?
I don't know.
If he doesn't take it, he'll get kicked off.
My memory isn't as good as it used to be.
No, that's okay.
Cards and letters coming. All right, anything else?
Well, anything else?
There's a bit in the work session, you've got a couple items, so. Uh, the budget, I finished submitting the budget for FY '22.
Thank you. Oh, we, we were gonna talk about our, our rates, our, our fees.
Yeah, that is not on the agenda, but I, you know, you probably wanna have that on the agenda for, for next time.
All right.
Beth, when we do that, can you, can you, can you send us a note of what, of what they currently are by, by category?
Sure, and then what, okay.
Do you know, do you have any contact with your, your peers, like in different towns, to see what other, you know, contiguous towns are, are billing for their rates?
That's, I can do that, sure.
I would love to see that.
We typically look at Groton for their comprehensive permit rates.
Why, we, we, yeah, right before, right before 40B, what did we raise it, like, a huge amount of money, yeah.
Yeah, it kinda shocked the applicant at the time. Yeah, it kinda shocked the applicant at the time when he came in with a two hundred dollar check and was told, no, you're gonna have to add a couple more zeros to that.
I thought, I thought it was like two or three thousand that went and increased, yeah, because we were so underpriced, it was ridiculous.
Yeah, it was, it was absurd, yeah, and, uh.
Jason, so what happens is the, the cost of like, um, a special permit, I don't even know what it costs, but Beth does a lot of work to, to get the, you know, the, um, the butters notified through certified mail and all the work, so the application fees are supposed to be somewhat transparent as far as paying, paying the cost of the town doing those work. And these comprehensive permits, these forty Bs were, we, we put in a boatload of time, and it was like a couple hundred bucks. It was like Dave said, it was like, are you kidding?
Well, um, uh, it turns out that what we're doing now is we're making the applicants pay for the advertising directly. Is that right, Beth?
That's correct.
And, uh, do they pay for the, um, um, list of butters? That's like ten bucks or something, all right? It's not a big deal.
Uh, postage and publication are now, um, the responsibility of the applicant. That was changed back, uh, by the previous land use coordinator.
So postage could get into, into big bucks for certified mail if they have a big list of a butter, so.
Uh, we haven't been certified mail. We haven't, we aren't required per the bylaw to send certified mail, so that's not in the bylaw. It doesn't have to be certified. So it's been sent certified of certificate of mailing. So mailings are about two dollars and ten cents a, a butter. So that's not that heavy, you know, for a cost.
I know, we used to set it certified.
Yep.
Yeah.
Town council said that is not a requirement in our bylaw, so the town, the land use coordinator also changed that policy, so we've been sending it with a certificate of mailing, which is different, yeah.
Well, it's the gold standard in the legal business, certified mail, so I don't know why we're not doing that, but whatever. Um, okay. So I was thinking that, you know, our, right now, our fee for permits is like a bu- a hundred and seventy-five bucks? Is that, I think it is something like that, so.
It's three hundred for a special permit.
Three hundred?
Yeah, for a special permit.
But if the, if, if the, uh, I guess you should figure out how much time you're spending on the average special permit.
Okay.
And then, um, because if the applicant's paying for the advertising, we used to cover the advertising and the, uh, butters notice, uh, in our application fee.
Okay.
So I just, you know, I, I just don't want to be overcharging people, because we could get, we could get whacked for that.
Yeah, all right. So I look at the hours, you know, estimate of hours of administrative time spent. Okay, I can look at that, sure.
Okay.
Perfect.
Well, other than that, um, what else do we have in there?
Annual report, Beth.
Yep, the annual report, the draft annual report. Um, I don't know if you guys want, just want me to write that up and send it around?
Bill's one, it's supposed to come from Bill as the chairman. That's why I've never wanted to be chairman.
All right, Bill. I'll send you the data. It's been a pretty quiet year, but you can go on and on about, you know, all our online meetings.
Well, that's fine, sure.
All right, I'll send you the data for, for, in terms of, um, what the board has, has processed for permits and, and hearings. Okay, great. And then, um, there were a couple of notices from, I think, let's see.
You just say towns, notices from Townsend and other towns. That's all you said.
Yeah, so those, I'll just take a quick look. We received, the, the board received a few notices, so just worthwhile. Basically memorandum from the board of selectmen with the holidays on it, so you don't want to meet on those days. And then there's a couple of notices from other towns. Uh, oh, this one is important. Um, uh, basically, at the meeting of the board of selectmen held on February second, the board voted to open the annual and special town meeting warrant on February third, twenty twenty-one. Warrant articles will be accepted for the annual town meeting warrant until March first, twenty twenty-one. Warrant articles will be accepted for the special town meeting warrant until April second, twenty twenty-one. And if you have any questions, I'm asking.
Okay.
And town meeting has been, um, I'm pretty sure a town meeting has been scheduled May fourth. The, I know that the annual town election is, um, April twenty-sixth. I think that's good.
Are we aware of any zoning amendments or changes coming up for the town meeting?
Ah, good question, yes. Uh, the planning board has been working on an age-restricted, uh, development, zoning amendment bylaw. Uh, public, the next public hearing for that is February twenty-second. Um, if you'd like a copy of the draft, I'd be happy to distribute the draft. The planning board has been working hard on, um, finalizing some pretty major decisions. I will say the first draft was reviewed by town council, and there were, um, concerns that when you obligate the age restriction, uh, you run the risk of, I, I'll just come right out and say it, discrimination against familial status and, uh, other age, you know, discrimination. It triggers a few concerns. So the planning board had rewritten the bylaw, and the second draft removed the age restriction as obligatory. Um, town council reviewed that draft and felt it was a, it was, you know, approved by town council, but I believe the planning board is still, has taken a vote, uh, at the last public hearing that they would like to continue with the age-restricted obligation. So town council is now, um, rewording the draft for the next public hearing, which is on the twenty-second. So it's been a process, um, but it will be on town meeting warrant. Um, it will also a city roads act, um, bylaw proposal. That's not quite ready yet, but that's coming. And there will also be a forty, a chapter forty-three D, uh, warrant article coming up, um, to, so the town can, um, submit a application to the state for, uh, local expedited permitting on a couple of, uh, select properties in town. So there's a lot going on. Um, those are a couple of projects that have been coming, the town has been, uh, received grants for, from, uh, the planning commission.
But the, um, the age, the age restriction, um, uh, bylaw that the plan, what you said, they've taken out the, the restriction of, of the age limiting?
Uh, the last public hearing, they kind of, they took it out, um, and then it's going back in, I'll put it that way. Um, there was a lot of discussion. Um, you can actually go online and watch the public hearing, but town council was present. Um, he did tell, you know, there was a lot of, you know, weren't sure if they were really happy with it, so, um, he will reword it and put the age restriction back in as obligatory and, um, avoid any potential problems with discrimination of, you know, bedroom count or familial status or any sort of, uh, pitfalls that might occur. So that's what he's working on now. So, um, when it comes back on the twenty-second, you'll see, uh, the reworded draft, hopefully sooner, but I don't know. So I will let the board know, and I will, um, email it to the board members.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you send me a copy? At my, my office, we do, we do a lot of, um, developments that are age-restricted, and we have no problems.
Oh, good, good, yeah, yep. This one has been.
Kind of jumps over, he kind of jumps through the, through the end and thinks everything's gonna fall apart, and Scott Chickenlitt is following with him. That's, you know, we've, we've actually gone against him in his office in the past.
Oh, yeah.
Bill can.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Could you check and see if there's any case law on this, uh, discrimination in age-restricted housing?
Yeah, I mean, we do it all the time. And one of my partners and Adam wouldn't even cross the street to shake hands with. They, they've had such good, good article, a good, good discussion. But I'd love to see that, to see what, what they're proposing as far as the wording.
Yeah, me too, right? Because I was concerned about, you know, uh, trying to apply that all over town as opposed to targeting, you know, my original concept was targeting downtown commercial for, you know, like, four units per acre type of things, and, uh, it's been, you know, I don't know what's going on, but.
Five acre minimum, yeah. It turns out to be a five acre minimum, yeah.
Well, that, see, that, that's.
Defeats the purpose, doesn't it?
It does, yeah. It's not gonna work, and I think the last thing they want me to do is get up in town meeting and shoot them down, so I, I think they really should, uh, rethink this.
Everybody's working on it, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
This has been a pet peeve of Bill's for years.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know.
It'll still be a five.
Problem is, I mean, so many people are whining. First of all, the real estate people have nothing to sell in Townsend. Houses sell in about a millisecond, and, um, you know, and we need, we need housing, and we've got all these big farms and stuff that people, you know, maybe there's a few wealthy people that can buy a big farm, but, but for the most part, people who thought they were gonna be able to retire on their, you know, real estate gains, uh, you know, have been SOL since two thousand and eight or so, so.
We have an aging population in New England as well, and, you know, when someone's looking downsized or do some, like, single level living, you can't, first of all, you can't find it. Like you said, there's no inventory. And then, second of all, they're competing with a first-time home buyer that might, you know, that wants something smaller, so, um, it, it's just really tough for older folks to, to make those moves.
And, you know, I'm having, my vet is down in town, right across from the common down there, and, you know, it's just phenomenal, um, taking the dog to the vet, and the road noise on one nineteen, I mean, it's the truck noise, I mean, it's not a great place to be downtown Townsend, and so I'm, I'm thinking, you know, if we did a little more.
You get a little used to it.
Yeah, you get a little used to Manhattan when you're living there, but that's kind of what you expect, you know? So, I don't know. I mean, I think the only way to, to change the downtown environment is to have more people living there and people that want to walk, and, and maybe they'll start jumping up and down and say, hey, you know, let's drop the speed limit to ten miles an hour through the center of town, and, and there goes the road noise.
Yeah. Traffic calming, absolutely. Well, I hope everybody will be, um, able to attend the public hearing on the twenty-second, because this is all really great. As administrator for both boards, I really love to see, uh, love to see this kind of collaboration. Great.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Joe, at six thirty-three.
Thank you.
All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Jason? You all, you all right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
All right.
All right, thanks for coming, Jason.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much.
Be in touch, Jason.
Thanks, Beth. Appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Have a great night, everyone.
Still deep freeze.
Oh, yeah.